This conference will now be recorded.
So, in, oh, let's, hey, Justin. Welcome.
Hey, it's me.
We just started recording a moment ago, and do you want to formally begin the meeting?
Want to wait a moment for?
Dave?
Yeah, anyone heard from Dave?
Let me text him right now. I also did text the group a moment ago. Just making sure that everybody was able to get in coordinated with Dorothea. So Dave has gotten a couple of messages now, so I think that we should probably just get started, and then he'll join in later if he can join.
Sounds good.
Okay, well, we actually got our meeting going.
Yay.
So, I guess the first announcement is we are hosting this meeting virtually due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and the information about how to connect for the public is posted on the village's website. So with that in mind, I'll make a motion to open the workshop meeting tonight.
Second.
Aye.
Aye, assuming that Justin.
Look, aye.
Is Justin freezing? No.
Is there a big lag for me?
Yeah, you're freezing a little bit.
You're lagging.
Audio is.
Oh, that's lovely. I, I'm on public, I'm on public Wi-Fi, so I'm not sure what I can do about it.
Okay.
You could perhaps call in with your phone too if this audio is not working great. As a backup. Can't hear you.
I will do that. I'll just mute my.
So, Joanne, to get your big white notebook out.
My what?
The big white notebook with the LWRP in it.
Yep, I have it right here, yeah.
Our old friend.
Yeah, I know. I talked to Renee, and she said she'd actually pulled it off the show and got it out to look at. And, you know, and to reference her, their referral to us.
You know, and it, you know, I am a big fan of this document, but it too is in need of updating.
Yeah, yeah.
Referrals that, you know.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, but anyway.
Sorry, Justin, you are muted on your phone. And I think that I can't see a mechanism to unmute you. I think you can do it with a keypad. Maybe it's star six. I think it's star six. So, Justin, if you can press star six on your phone.
I haven't figured it out yet.
Can you press star six on your phone? I think that should unmute that connection.
I can't get up. I'm using the app. I'm not using the.
You might also, well, the app is probably going to go through data. You might have the same issue.
Number officially doesn't work. It's waiting for the organizer to start the meeting.
Darn. Well, I guess we can just proceed as long as we can hear you here. And that's the information from Facebook, right, Justin? The phone number there.
You have a pen?
Justin has a beautiful view.
Well, I'm not sure. The link on the website for the phone access is broken. I may have the wrong access code.
The, it should be the same as this meeting code. I think this, I'll just paste in these details that I think should work to bring into the same. Whoops, that didn't work.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure.
Okay, this phone number and the access code is then the same as the meeting ID. Which is this.
Is the village office open by now? It is, isn't it?
Yeah, I think they've always been there. It's just whether or not you can get in.
Right. I think that, I believe that now you can get in. I mean, I can see us
Yeah.
you know, sitting, you know, several feet apart, but, you know, conducting business in the old-fashioned, efficient way.
Okay, is this working?
Well, I can hear you.
Okay. Sorry, that's taking a little while. I'm just had a frantic hop from one hotel to another. And so I had to get checked in here about 10 minutes before the meeting. But anyway. Thank you, guys. You're talking a bit about the LWRP. And what was this from Renee?
Nothing. I just happened to talk to her and because historic Pittsburgh had a question about the barn, the Caucans Barn Reconstruction on the canal. And she talked about the LWRP also, and she had gotten the white book out that Mindy had given us and dusted it off and was researching the LWRP.
Okay. So what's going on with that barn, by the way?
Well, I talked to Bob, and the, all the work on the trail was stopped because of COVID. And so nothing's started again, as far as I can tell. It may start up, but it said it's closed. I walked down there the other day, and it said that the trail is closed. The barn estimate for redoing the barn came in at twice what they budgeted or what they thought it was going to be. So there's a little glitch there.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that being, let's get it done by end of June, didn't work out so well, but I guess there's a few good reasons for that.
Yeah, I'm sure they got an extension on their grant for it.
Okay. All right. Well, shall we get started? Since this has been postponed for a little while, well, we had talked about going over in here with pages 75 to 84, which is the village section, and then there's pages 85 to 96, which I, after reading them, a lot of that was kind of some boilerplate stuff, and I'm not sure how much of that is applicable. But do we want to just jump in on page 75? And Mr. Legib, do you have the ability to share screens or anything?
Let me try.
Or maybe there's no point if everyone's got a copy in front of them. I thought if we actually had audience members, that might be polite to actually share what we're talking about.
You know, I would need to change the permissions on my computer for that, and then I think I'll have to restart the application, and I'm worried about that causing issues since I'm recording and I'm the organizer.
Okay.
I might drop us.
So everyone has a copy of the document, is that correct?
I do. So I have a question. Are we only, so the LWRP overlay district really only comes up to Monroe Avenue, Bouton Avenue, that area? So when they're.
Correct. It's north of Monroe Avenue.
Right. So when they're talking about, so those are the only things that we need to address in their plan, are the things that are in that area, not in the whole village?
Yeah, like, well, if you talk about like the Jefferson Main Street intersection, for example, that's not in there.
Right.
I did actually read through the LWRP document. I don't know if anyone else did. But when we, if we want to talk about it after we go through these initial sections, I had noted some things in there that were quite relevant. And my takeaway from reading the LWRP document is they have some work to do. The committee that worked on this.
Before you came in, Susan said, and I agree, that it's a beautiful piece of work, but it does need, it's like an old piece of silver that's gotten tarnished. It just needs to be shined. You're right, it needs to be updated. Is that what you mean, Justin?
Um, well, I think there's some inherent problems with it, but we can get to that later. But I mean, there's a lot of good background and information in the document, yes, but one of my concerns is what are they trying to solve, and does it actually solve it? And so I'm thinking that some of this is, I've seen a lot of work going into this, but I'm not sure it's actually solving what it's supposed to solve, as I guess is my biggest problem. But anyway, let's just jump into it. So let's just start on page 75.
Justin? Can I, I just, I want to piggyback on that, that comment that you made. Just two general things about the ATP and the village recommendations. I mean, number, number one, I find it disappointing that a document devoted to human-powered mobility in a community located on the Erie Canal doesn't include the Erie Canal. So nothing about kayaking, rowing, and, you know, I think this is, you know, I've, I've thought this with the comp plan that, you know, what makes Pittsburgh so unique, its history and the, and the fact that it's a canal village, you know, never seemed to be, never seems to be highlighted or focused. So I was just disappointed that the, the waterway, the canal itself and, and for recreation or even for, you know, maybe commercial transportation as alternate transportation was never ever mentioned. So that's just one general comment. My other general comment is that there are 12 general categories of recommendations, and five of them are worded as where the action is to consider. And, you know, that's, I don't know what we would even be judging if their recommendation is to consider something. Consider it and then get back to us with a recommendation that is something that can truly be measured against the LWRP. So I was so disappointed that there are, you know, five of these recommendations are just, are couched in such inactive, you know, kind of passive language, that I wonder, you know, what the planning board, you know, we, we look at plans. You know, we, if we look at drawings of things, like, and so I thought, I was very disappointed that five of these, and, you know, some of them have, you know, ABC parts to them, you know, are all, consider this, consider that. Like, I, I thought that would have been, you know, the work of the ATP committee to come up with recommendations. And it sounds like a lot of this is, you know, for future recommendations. So anyway, two, two little comments that I that bugged me. Yep.
Thank you, Susan. That was a good point. I had similar observations. You mentioned the nine, the 12 policies in LWRP. One of the primary ones that we're going to have issue with, and when I was looking at this, is policy nine, which is access to the canal, meaning that waterfront areas and development along them need to provide access to the canal, and there's a whole bunch of recommendations in the LWRP. And I'm thinking one of the prime directives of this active transportation plans needs to include conductivity to the canal. And just a little bit of background, I don't know if you guys read through this, but some of the earlier pages, particularly pages 37 and 38, which goes under the needs assessment, talks about what some of the goals are of this plan. And for example, the town's goal was to expand the sidewalk system and connect gaps in the trail system, change aggressive behavior by motorists, require future developers to install sidewalks, and priority should be to complete the sidewalk system around the village of Pittsburgh in order to connect the village to plazas and commercial areas in the town. The whole connectivity to the Erie Canal, which is a major focus of the LWRP, is completely missing and needs to be elevated, in my opinion, towards one of the prime directives of this document. I know they mentioned access to shopping plazas like Pittsburgh Plaza, access to the village and the town, and access to schools was, I think, pretty much the only other high-level directive that they had in there. And I'm thinking the, the whole town connectivity needs to be that high. And I'm thinking that connectivity to schools needs to actually go in this document. I've seen like little sections, but I'm not seeing actually concrete plans on how to make some of these networks work.
Justin, would you, since the LWRP and the ATP are both plans, would you tell, you know, just identify which plan you're talking about?
The LWRP plan is that approximately 200-page document.
No, I, no, I know the, I know it, I know.
Oh, okay. I'm talking about the ATP plan. So when I mentioned some of the prime directives of the ATP plan are coming from page 37 and 38, which are its, the needs assessment. I know that wasn't on our reading list for today, but when I was kind of reading through this, kind of 37, 38, 39, kind of lay out what some of the goals for this is. And one of my major takeaways is it doesn't really achieve many of these goals, which is problematic.
Is that, is that our purview?
I, well, we can comment on all kinds of things, but well. Our purview in the town, I guess if we wanted to send comments about some of the stuff in the town, we could. But technically, the village side of things is more our purview. So if, if, go ahead, sorry.
I was just going to say that when we were all connected, but we, we didn't have a quorum after the other meeting. Renee was on for a moment, and she did remind us that the referral is going to be for the LWRP and seemed to imply that, you know, there, there wasn't really a desire for broader input. Personally, I think that it's, it's a shame if this board doesn't get asked for more input. I mean, just the stuff that you're saying right now, Susan and Justin, is really valuable, and I don't know why we would. You know, it would, it would just be a shame to not have that included somewhere. So I hope that we can kind of make some comments in a, in a broader capacity.
I think we can make whatever comments we want. They can ask for what they want, and we can send whatever we want. So that's. But anyway, we started some decent discussion. So anyway, some, some background there. I appreciated hearing from Susan that the whole connectivity with the canal, she also observed that that was missing. And I really think the, the ATP here, by not, the members of the committee not reading through the LWRP and its goals, I think this really set us out on, it could have gone on a better path if they had done that early on in, in their project. But that was skipped over.
Justin, I was, I was wondering, you know, in terms of the, the comments that you're making as well about this document, it seems to me that the focus is more on, you know, as, as far as the active transportation, the focus seems to be more on transportation, you know, getting from point A to point B in the network. And perhaps that's why, you know, it just seems to be a little more of a stretch to me, at least, to really see people using, you know, kayaks or something functionally on the canal. It seems to be more maybe recreational activity rather than the focus being on getting from point A to point B. I think it should be both, but, you know, it just seems like maybe that's the direction this, this document has taken. Do you think that's accurate, or?
Well, let me just tell you about a person I talked to. They live on Crestview by the elementary school. And I talked to them, and they say, oh, they like coming into the village to go bicycle riding. They put their car and their bicycle, and their bicycle in their car, they drive a quarter mile to half a mile to go into the village. And then, because they don't feel safe riding their bike across Jefferson Road. And then they unload it over by the canal, and then they go biking along the canal. That's the problem that needs fixing. So point A to point B, one of those points, it should be the Erie Canal. Other points should be schools and shopping plazas like Pittsburgh Plaza, and particularly our universities. It's terrible that students at a university can't safely travel into the village, although that's improving if they use the sidewalks. But, I mean, the whole point A to point B, one of the questions is what are points A and what are points B? Does this actually provide a means of getting there as a cohesive system? And I'm not seeing a whole lot of that, to be honest. What I'm seeing is, oh, let's make this little development in this little section here without it actually being a path going between, you know, two destinations.
I wanted to add that I do think a lot of bike riding in the village, it's not necessarily A to B type riding. It's along the canal, it's along streets that are less trafficked. So, you know, my comments about kayaking, obviously recreational. But, you know, I kind of think that a lot of the bike riding is, you know, recreational as, as well. Yeah, I wouldn't want to ride my bike or kayak to work. Not because it wouldn't be fun, but, but, you know, on a day like today, you know, then I would, you know, have to, you know, have an hour-long cold shower, you know, to, you know, face, you know, my work tasks, but anyway. Yeah.
Okay. Well, all right. Well, we've had some background stuff. I was trying earlier to jump into these village recommendations on, like, starting with page 75, and particularly the figure on 76. Do you want to go in there and go over that?
Sure.
So I don't know if it makes sense to go over these one by one. If anyone had any general comments, that would be good. I'm looking at the figure on page 76, and I didn't really have any, these all seemed like reasonable things to me. I didn't have a lot to add to any of these things. Any other thoughts?
Well, how do you, how do you evaluate, you know, something that says consider?
Are you talking, are you back to the LWRP? Or are you talking about like, consider installing curb cuts, for example?
I'm, I'm looking at, you know, on page, you know, the recommendations in regard to pedestrian improvements, like number two, consider mid-block crossings. I just, I, I find it so weakly worded that, you know, I don't know what it's really asking us to, to compare for consistency if it's, you know, not, you know, not a, not a, not a, something concrete.
I guess I agree that I generally like things to be more direct. When I read that, I kind of thought that it was just saying that we're not the board, you know, we're not the ones who are actually approving this, and so therefore we can't say do this. All we can say is that the board should consider it. But I think that then they could just say, do it, and then that also implies that somebody else needs to consider it and vote on it.
No, I would agree. Active language would be good. And now I'm seeing Susan's confusion. I confused her comments earlier. She was talking about 12 considerations. I thought you were talking about the LWRP considerations, but you're referring to the ones on page 76.
Yeah, I'm referring to recommendations and not LWRP policies.
Okay.
Well, I mean, so, Justin, like, if you don't, yeah, you know, that's an interpretation, I guess, of consider. I'm, I'm good with that. I would just encourage them to, you know, take a stronger stand.
I agree. I think that would be nicer.
When I talked to Renee, she said that she and Alisa have control of the document, or can, can add to or edit the document. And I think they were going to do as much wordsmithing as they could. Susan, have you talked to Alisa about, about?
Actually, I got a very explicit text from Renee saying that the recommendations were not going to be touched.
Okay. Okay. So why are we commenting?
Well, I, I think, you know, Justin Leckev had a, you know, a point. Since this, you know, the ATP isn't a empowered, you know, board in a way. You know, maybe they felt
The wording.
Language, although they, you know, other places they seem to be able to, you know, be more direct about something. So it was just a, for, something for the planning board to consider. And it's an odd thing, we've done this before, to consider one document in terms of another document. There's not a plan in sight, really. That's kind of a, you know, an odd enough, I think, exercise to begin with. But then for something, you know, to be even, you know, kind of made murkier, you know, by kind of seeming hypothetical, I, that's what I was objecting to. But I can, I can live with it. If you would just go on.
I, I also just sent an email to Renee asking about the ability to update some things in the document. And she said that, she had said in our, in our last call that she was going to update it using DC. And I wonder if that might've actually meant Adobe Acrobat, which I would hope we don't do because that's not a good way to update the document. You know, we, we should be using InDesign so that we can update it going forward. And updating it using Acrobat would be kind of a one-way street. There would be a dead end after this batch. So I asked her if I could help to put pressure on anybody else, ask them for a copy of the original InDesign because I just don't think it's a sustainable way to actually get any updates made now or in the future if we start using Acrobat. That was just a, a minor point.
Yeah. Thank you for sharing that, Justin. I emailed Matt Ingles, who is the author of the document, and asked him for the InDesign copy. And that was about, that was before our last meeting, so that was over a week ago. And I received no response from him. So I could try again. I've asked Bob the same thing. Some comments I heard from Bob was he thought that Renee had gotten an original copy of the document and the software needed to edit it, but that would make sense for what you're saying is if that's just Acrobat Pro used to edit it, I, we need the original document. So maybe after we get our referral, we'll need to kick down some subpoena powers and subpoena the document.
Yeah, can we, well, could we just foil it maybe?
We can issue a subpoena to Matt, to Matt Ingles to get a copy of the document. I mean, asking for it for three weeks hasn't worked.
Okay, well, you know, I, I don't know the subpoena process. I'd be happy to tell about with filing some paperwork if that'll help to move things along.
Yeah, well, we could say. I mean, that's a rash thing to do, but we can't foil it because no government has it. So, I, I mean, you work as a consultant and me, I don't know what you do. I write software as well. I don't always give the source code out to the customer, but if they ask for it, I always give it to them. So usually it's just changing so often that if they get a copy, it'll be out of date within days. But we don't make a, I never make a policy of hiding any of that. If they paid us to develop it, they can have it. So that's, do you have similar policies?
We give the source code all the time. We make sure our clients have access to it, so we never hold that back.
Okay. Maybe a phone call to Matt Ingles would help, but anyway. So we were discussing those twelve points and what I heard from people is the active language is missing and it's very soft and passive, but that's not necessarily bad. We don't need to necessarily take an issue with that in and of itself if they want to write it that way. But I didn't have too many problems with any of these projects in particular. Anyone else?
No, I, I do think, like, maybe just add, you know, some type of signage or some protocol for bicyclists and pedestrians who share sidewalks on South Main Street with all of the active driveways. You know, and a lot of kids on bikes, I don't blame them. I wouldn't want to be out in the road either, especially if cars are parked. There's, there's no, there's no room for a bike lane. So, you know, you opt for the sidewalk, but there are a lot of pedestrians. I've seen so many near misses. I just think that would also need to be addressed by signage, by an educational recommendation for bike riders and pedestrian. Something, because there are enough shared sidewalks, especially with all the driveways that, you know, I, I think there could be some improved safety measures.
I'm not really sure how that's supposed to work. I was reading in here that riding bikes on sidewalks is illegal, but people do it all the time anyway and there's no other way to get around in a lot of areas. South Main's a great example. So you think signage would be good? They're doing those, what were they? No bicycle signs that there are spray painting on there?
They, they weren't no bicycle signs. They were, but I'm, I'm not surprised you thought of it that way. It said, actually, there was small writing around the circle that said yield to pedestrians. Then it had a bicycle, like prominently in the middle. I think the pedestrian might have been better, you know, off in the, in the middle, you know, for bicyclists, you know, who's, you know, it's hard to read that print when you're, you know, passing by it in a nanosecond. But, you know, maybe a stronger pedestrian-centered graphic would be, you know, a little bit better.
Okay. Since I'm on the road, I don't have my documents and everything completely as disorganized as I usually do. You know, what was it about? Half an hour into the meeting, I had like lines baying sprawled around me of documents everywhere. But anyway. Let me, let me give a couple more thoughts I had on, at least on these first twelve items. So I'm on page seventy-eight of the HEP document. And number eight talks about curb extensions at Sutherland Street and Lincoln Avenue. And my note was something we had discussed previously, which was curb extensions at Four Corners and possibly turning those right turn lanes into on-street parking. So basically, we had talked about that possibly when we were looking at the new Mediterranean place at the old Starbucks. What's the name of that?
Rachel's.
Rachel's. So we were talking about the possibility that they bump out a, a little peninsula into Monroe Avenue there. I guess it's called State Street in that part. That would shield parched cars on the street and that would also shorten the distance a pedestrian would need to go to walk across Monroe Avenue. So that was just something we had, an idea we had talked about once. And I think I talked it, about it with Renee and Bob and they're like, ha, DOT will love that. So I, I think there's a lot of things that we would like that we can't get because DOT only cares about cars and moving cars. Another section I had is there's some parts of this document that are obsolete, number nine in particular. This was addressed in the comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan and the ATP plan now are going to be conflicting and they both talk about similar things. I think this ATP should be looking at the comp plan and refining the ideas, not necessarily conflicting with them. So this is the light, the reworking of the library lot area. And there's a comment in here on removing parking spaces and redeveloping as usual green and park. And there were some more specific diagrams about that in the comp plan.
Okay, I was, I was looking at the Google satellite image on that and I could see the eighteen spots that we're talking about and I could see how it kind of would make sense to, you know, dig up the concrete and put dirt there. But I, I haven't looked at the comp plan in that area. Was it a more comprehensive plan of the, of the entire parking area that they were talking about there or?
Yes, there was a whole, there was a diagram, an illustration of a possible rework of it. And the parking spots that were closest to the Erie Canal, there's a steep bank that overlooks the canal. I think in the comp plan or one of the meetings, I sat in some of these meetings and they, someone showed some photographs from the block thirty-two, looking across the canal. What do you see? Parched cars. And so instead, and there's a great view there, but it's used for car parking right now. If you know what I'm talking about, the top of the steep hill right across the canal from block thirty-two.
Yep.
And so comment is, hey, why don't you put a few tables and some seating area? Maybe a place to play checkers and chess and stuff like that and stare at the canal and have a little linear park there. I think that, that was, and the idea proposed in the comprehensive plan. And we can, they can pull up a citation for that. But this has similar ideas, but again, it's kind of, if it's already in the comprehensive plan, I think this is suffering from not being updated since the comprehensive plan was adopted.
Yep. That makes sense.
The other, I'll give another couple of comments. Signalization number eleven, again, I'm on page seventy-eight of the HEP. That talks about, discussed with the DOT, the intersection of Sutherland Street and Monroe Avenue and signalization. And whatever they can do there, so people can actually walk across the street to walk to school. Sounds like a good idea to me because there are no gaps in traffic anywhere near rush hour as we've known from other things we've looked at. And so that makes some sense. I don't know what can be done. The DOT has a bunch of laws around, I think there's a bunch of laws around bridges and train tracks that make signalization at best complicated. But the other thing I wanted to bring up is, my note is signals at each end of Shane Place. So where it, so you can drive up and down Shane Place, but then you come out at one of the major highways. And it's really, really difficult to turn there. And that was one of the things that was mentioned in our LWRP is you should put stoplights and signals at each end of Shane Place. And I think that would be really, really helpful in allowing bicyclists and pedestrians to cross the road there, slow traffic down and allow vehicles to get in and out. So I would like to see that concept fleshed out. I don't, obviously, the village isn't going to be paying for stoplights.
I don't know how much these, this comment would be considered to modify here, but number ten, they already discussed that at village board meetings and they planned on paying for a light to be installed when the bridge is renovated.
I thought Bob said that DOT was going to put a temporary light at the end of Shown Place in North Main Street during the bridge renovation. And if it worked, they would probably leave it. That was my take and I hope they do. I'm sorry they didn't recommend it in this plan because I thought that they dealt with that bridge too lightly.
Which bridge? Which end of Shane Place?
North Main Street. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, both of those are problematic locations. You see people, people that are active in the canal are, all the time are going over there. Cars are trying to pull out there all the time and it's a big conflict. I'm not sure which one, which end of it is worse. So I'll add a couple of other notes that I had, which was something that's been discussed before and I don't remember if that was in the comp plan or not, but eliminating the right turn lanes at Four Corners. So there's no right turn on red anyway. So the question's always been, what purpose of those? It just widens the road and doesn't really increase traffic flow much at all?
You know, you're, you're right, especially like in, in front of utility where people are parking anyway. There can only be a couple, maybe two or three cars in the, in the right-hand lane if the parking spaces are, are being used. So that really seems like, you know, you know, kind of a, a very inefficient, you know, use of really prime real estate that could, you know, benefit pedestrians.
Let me see here. What are some other notes I had?
I think it would also, to, to get rid of those lanes, it might actually help for the people who forget you can't take a right on red. If they're blocked behind somebody, then they stay there.
Good point, yes.
Nobody reads that. No, no right turn on red.
Yeah, good point.
So that was, for people making illegal right turn on red is somewhat of a hazard to pedestrians.
Yeah.
So at the intersection, my other note is the signaling for pedestrians is terrible there. How long, Susan, how long does it take for you to walk from your shop to Village Hall? And how long does it take to walk? Because you're typically waiting like one or two light cycles to cross one direction, then one or two light cycles to cross the other direction. It's terrible. And you gotta push the button and instead of it just like always pausing every single light.
You know, the, the button doesn't, doesn't affect the cycle. It only affects the, the okay to walk lights. So it's not a, it's not a call button by, by any stretch. It only gives pedestrians, you know, the little, the okay, you know, to, to walk after people have made left-hand turns. So, you know, I always thought they should be automatic, not buttons.
Yeah, so that's my thought is that you just put a pause in there for people to cross without having to push a button.
Right, yeah.
And you know, a side effect of that is if there's always a pause when no traffic is going through there, it might create gaps on these busy streets so people could actually walk across the street further down the, the road. So at Sutherland Street or over by Chase Bank, for example.
Yeah, yeah, good point. Here's a question to fill the space. Where is Durham Way?
That is at the State Street end of the village. It's like the last little street. It's like a street with five houses on it. Bob Michael lives over there.
It's on the right, just. It's on the right, just before Wood Creek. It's on the right-hand side if you're going from, from the four corners toward Marsh Road.
Right, so that's where I thought, but is it, I, I didn't think it was called Durham Way. It's, and it's not indicated on on the map.
I think that is.
Is that one of the streets that didn't make it to the village map?
Yeah, that is Durham Way over there. I think it's one of the, the few streets in the village where you actually, I, I don't think the sidewalk goes all the way there. I think you've actually got to cross State Street and then go down State Street on the other side and then cross State Street again to get over to Durham. It gets forgotten.
Or do what I do, just walk down the canal and then go through someone's backyard. Or something like that. Okay, um, on these three pages, I'm just thumbing through and seeing if I had any other comments. I don't know where I wrote this down, but I had a comment somewhere that has a simple thing that needs fixing is there's a corner of, Susan, right across the street by you, right at Jefferson and State Street. And there's another one over at Sutherland and Jefferson by the high school. Is there's these electrical boxes that are sitting right on poles by the sidewalk and you can't see cars if you're, and you can't, it blocks cars' views of other cars. It blocks pedestrians' views of things. It blocks all kinds of things. There's a, like a six-foot-high, about three-foot-wide metal box at about chest level that's just sitting right in the field of view there.
What street is that again, Justin?
Right by the high school at Sutherland and West Jefferson. So if we look at the map on 76, there's a number two there where Sutherland and West Jefferson meet. I believe there's one over there. I've heard some residents complaining about that. And Susan sees this much more often than I do, but right at the junction of Jefferson and Main Street. I believe that kitty corner from the Brazis is where another giant box is. So it's the same side of the street that your office is, Susan.
Yeah. And, you know, and that was involved in, you know, one of the many, you know, fender benders at that intersection. So it's a vulnerable spot to, you know, to put an electrical box there anyway. And I mean, it's, it's frightening when that light is out. And that, that happens on occasion. Yep.
Okay, moving on. Did anyone have any other comments on those first 12 items? Or 78?
No, I think they, I mean, I, I, I find them, you know, pretty good recommendations. I just think they should really be recommendations, you know, especially where it's, you know, consider or maintain. Like if you're maintaining something, how is that even, you know, a recommend, a call to action?
It's not a change.
I'm, I'm, I'm going to get off that now.
Okay, I think we've had universal agreement about it. We'll add that to our comments of whoever we, whatever we send to whomever.
Okay.
Okay, so let's move on to page 79 then. So this is going over this diagram, I believe on page 80 of a bunch of recommendations. And a lot of these make sense to me. Like, hey, shortening the left turn lane, that thing is what, like a quarter mile long? Currently, that makes a lot of sense. And they're adding on-street parking over there where Harlady Hot is. I mean, we can use more on-street parking. That would make for easy access to Village Hall and everything, but a really controversial meeting.
We don't have those.
So, and then what are the other things? So item C there, that crosswalk over by Village Hall, I, I mean, I kind of think it would make sense that you would put it from where the parking is, which is at the library. But I guess it can work either way.
What was the, when, when this was presented at a meeting where I think representatives from the fire department were present, did, didn't they have thoughts on the pedestrian island in that location? I thought it was less controversial by Washington, but in this location, it might not have been seen as favorably.
Yeah, the, the comment I heard is that, I was at the meeting when their, the fire department was talking about it, what the fire department claimed is per fire code, they need to have 20-foot clear street width. So if you want to have a, and apparently what they're used to doing is there's a traffic jam, they just cross over on the other side of traffic and drive over there. And so if they have obstacles in the middle of the road, that would prevent them from doing that. And we do know there's traffic jams, so I'm sure they have a challenge trying to drive around on our streets whenever they get a call. But they cited fire code and need for 20-foot free drivelanes. So if you look at boulevards that have like a prominent grassy area in the middle of the road, they're often, I've seen quite a few of them are often two-lane roads on either side, so they do have that 20-foot width. I don't know if that's why or that's not. But then I'm thinking of things like in Park Ave, there's what, Berkeley Street, which I think has one lane on either side and there's beautiful flowering trees right in the middle. I don't know how many of you are familiar with that area. But that type of thing would be a real nice treatment if we could get it.
Be nice if the, if, if the fire department would invest in one small fire engine.
Yeah.
And so a lot of big cities have them.
Yeah, so that was another thing I recall hearing them say is the turning radius of these large fire trucks is a big problem. So where at the junctions of streets, they want these big rounded corners so that they could turn in and out of these streets because their fire trucks are too big.
Yep.
So I would agree with you, Susan. Other comments that I've heard the fire department make is people talk about speed bumps from time to time. And the comment from them is you better hope you're not getting treated in the back of an ambulance while it's speeding over speed bumps. So the emergency vehicles don't like the speed bumps very much. How often is there ones on these little streets? I don't know. But so those are basically a summary of the three, three major comments I've heard from the emergency vehicles and the fire department, just they want the clear street width. They don't like the speed bumps and they like big broad turns to fit their big broad trucks. Susan and Joanne, I think I heard you guys talking about this at some of the comp plan meetings. This relates to item D, again on page 79 and 80, which are bike lanes. But what I'm kind of wondering is about the bridge. And Susan, you hit on it that on South Main Street, people use the sidewalks for riding over there. And I know the comp plan was talking about this, that wider sidewalks around the bridges would be helpful. And I recently heard the trustees complaining about it, that they want to narrow the sidewalks to make maintenance of a handrail easier. The DOT wants to.
What? It's set, it's almost a, you know, it's a one-person sidewalk as it is.
I'm not sure which bridge they're referring to. It might be the State Street Bridge over by Schoen, Schoen Place. But the one, the, the one that's really bad is the one on Main Street, again, over there, the other end of Shane Place. Like that one's so narrow and everyone says, I want to be able to cross and.
Right. Right. They, it must be the State Street Bridge, Justin.
But anyway, my, my note is we should have wider sidewalks on the bridge, on all these bridges. And my, they had cited a few documents in here that give construction guidelines. It looks like the recommendation is for eight-foot-wide sidewalks if they're adjacent to handrails or if they're adjacent to hard curbs. And I think an eight-foot-wide sidewalk on each bridge would be actually quite nice.
Right now, they've got three lanes on the bridge instead of two. I mean, in the plan. Is that, I can't figure out how they think that would be safe. It got a, a right or left turn lane in the middle of the bridge and then, so they're taking the two lanes that are there now and making them three. That's putting traffic even closer to the sidewalk. I don't.
Okay, so I guess it's a big queuing lane so someone can turn into Port of Pittsburgh Park and drive into the canal.
I think that's done.
No problem with that, apparently.
So yeah, that left turn on the bridge there. Um, that's a good one. I don't understand that, right now, what is it? It's just crosshatches, I believe, in the middle, isn't it? Or is it the left turn lane extending all the way to Main, to State Street?
No, the left turn lane is not on the North Main Street Bridge. It's up a ways. It starts maybe where? In front of the Village Hall?
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I think this is something we've all thought was, doesn't make sense. And they should make this two lanes and then provide wider sidewalks or a bike lane or something like that. Okay.
Justin, how do you, so how, how do you propose we go forward with these comments? They're recorded, they get written up and then we present these to the board of trustees.
Yeah, I, I, I think that makes sense. We'll just say that these are thoughts and ideas that we discussed in our meetings and just make a bolded list of them perhaps and send them on.
So, yep. And, and so when we get the official referral, I guess that's coming next week. And then we have 60 days to, is that right, to comment on the LWRP consistency? Then we'll dig into that at that time, I guess, after the 14th. Is that how you see it?
Maybe what we can, we can do is just send a few notes to the committee before we get into the LWRP review.
Okay.
Or not. I don't know when, anyway, we'll, we'll keep these notes and we'll send them. I think it's just keeping a, a running list of some thoughts and notes is just a good idea. Okay, I didn't have now, there is this item E. There is this RRFB note. Does anyone know what that is?
Oh, rapid, it's a flashing beacon. I looked that up. I can't remember exactly what it stands for. It's bright flashing thing.
Oh. Already, there's too many signs. I can't.
Rectangular rapid flash beacon.
Like they have in Canandaigua. Right?
Yeah.
Does anyone know how they work? Is it if a pedestrian's there, they start flashing or are they just always flash at prominent crosswalks?
I think it's pedestrian activated. A button. They don't flash if there's no pedestrian there.
Okay, and this other, so I think we'd all agree that that seems like a reasonable idea. And number F there, an item, crosswalk by Del Monte, that sounds like a, a nice idea to me as well.
Right. Is that where the fire department took exception?
That's what I recall.
No, it doesn't look too much different than, there's a little island further down the, the road by the railroad tracks. And I think this has been mentioned a few times as to like, well, why is the fire department okay with that one and not the other ones? But.
I think, wasn't there some discussion of getting rid of some of the parking spots on the other side of the road or something to make sure there's enough room by F, perhaps?
By F? So this says retain the parking, which I think is a good idea.
On that side, is there parking on the other side right now? I got Google satellite up too.
I don't think so. No.
No, just in front of the dairy house, the Corby House.
Any other comments on this section? This area around the North Main Street Bridge?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, so now up to page 81. Traffic calming. Now, number one here, where it talks about adding on-street parking on South Street.
That's awful.
You think that's awful?
I do. It's very hard to see when you're driving to turn right. I don't know. I feel like I have to go into the other lane, the oncoming traffic to turn right when there's cars parked there on Sunday. I don't know. I never liked it. I don't know. I feel like I have to go into the other lane, the oncoming traffic to turn right when there's cars parked there on Sunday. I don't know. I never liked it. Does slow traffic down though.
Yeah, I think that's.
What new 20 mile an hour speed limit is getting, uh, obeyed strictly, I'm sure.
Yeah.
At current state. Um, uh, let me just share a thought I had. Which is, um, parking on South Street. They're talking about Bike Boulevards in the next section. And, um, I, I had a comment relating to South Street on there, which is they had this Bike Boulevard, I think going down South Street, but then it doesn't go to anywhere. So, my thought is, what about South Street being the parking area for bicyclists access to Shane Place? And making a, a, um, so you park your car in South Street, you ride down the Bike Boulevard. You, uh, then have better sidewalks designed for bi, for bicycles that'll take you up over the bridge to get you to Shane Place. And then, um, by having that be, the recreational parking on South Street would free up parking spots at Shane Place, which any businesses would love. That's just an idea I had.
Uh, Justin, I guess I wasn't totally clear. Is that eliminating or is that adding parking on, on Shane Place or, uh, what's?
Adding parking on South Street, but basically encouraging, um, the recreational users of Shane Place to, instead of parking at Shane Place, to park on South Street. And then, uh, using that and then, uh, making a short, easy bike ride over there, over the bridge, and then biking there 20 miles down the canal or wherever they're going.
But then you'd have to use the space that was allocated to the Bike Boulevard on, on South Street to do that?
So, so, yeah, so basically that would basically put signage or something like that to encourage recreational users to park on South Street.
I see that as a hard sell, actually.
Just a thought.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if anyone would park there. People like to, um, find the big parking lot that the 10-foot walk rather than, to ride their bikes 20 miles, rather than to find the parking lot that's the uh, one-minute ride to the, your canal and then they go on their 20-mile ride. But, hey. Any other thoughts on items one through six on page 81 here on the traffic calming?
I wasn't a fan of, uh, on page 81, number four, the back-end angle parking on Lincoln Avenue. I, you know, I think Bob was in favor of that to make the parking lot behind the rec center smaller. They didn't, and there's so much parking back there. I don't know.
Yeah, I, I, I think that was the discussion is take some of the parking spots out of that parking lot, have more playing field and put a few in front there. Which I thought that was a great idea. And Joanne, you're there right down the road from it. I have never seen that parking lot anywhere close to being filled.
No. I think, um, plus a back-end angle. I've seen lots of, you know, nose-first, um, diagonal parking. That would be easier for me.
How do you enforce it? Poor Mike is gonna have to come by there all the time and make sure everybody's backed in.
Yeah, I think, I think this is too related to, uh, the Spiegel Center parking lot and that's a, that's a done deal.
Yeah.
Well, I don't have an opinion one way or the other if they want to put diagonal spots or parallel spots or, uh, reverse parallel spots. I think there's plenty of parking over there as it is. Uh, so these other items of reducing speed limit and reducing lane width on roads sound like great ideas to me.
Yeah, that'll be nice.
I don't know how to actually get cars to slow down. Something, um, I'd add, just a, something I was thinking about is, maybe this isn't the right section, but whatever can be done to increase gaps in traffic on our main streets so that people can actually um, get in and out of there. Uh, so there, there was a discussion earlier about Sutherland Street. Um, you know, the whole dilemma of, uh, Sutherland and Monroe, how do you make a turn off of Sutherland onto Monroe? Anytime, pretty much, it's terrible. Uh, we're in dire need of more gaps in traffic so that people can actually get in and out. I don't know how that could be done though.
There should be a stoplight there. There should be a stoplight there and then one on the other side of the tracks. I guess.
Yeah, I, I thought of that before, having, uh, a one-directional stoplight. So, they said it's not good for cars to be back in, stopped for a stoplight right next to the railroad tracks, although amusingly enough. Um, so that's what I've heard is the reason you can't do that is the, that intersection is too close to the train tracks. Um, I was just stopped at a light about two hours ago, that, a stoplight that was about 50 feet from train tracks. It can only fit one car between the stoplight and the train tracks. So, it obviously is done elsewhere.
Yeah, I, I know. I won't even try to turn left there. I just go up Jefferson Road.
I'm sure. So, so, Joanne, what is your way to get to Pittsburgh Plaza from your house?
Depends on the time of day. Sometimes even turning off Lincoln left onto Main Street is a challenge because the parked cars block your view of the.
You can't see.
If I really want to go that way, I'll turn right, go down, um, Locust and then to, to about, was it, South Street? And then turn left at the light. I mean, or if it's not too busy, I'll go down Washington to turn left. Or if I want to go to my daughter's house in Brighton, I just go down Jefferson Road to Clover. I just don't even bother. It's, it's very difficult to turn anywhere from my street in, toward the city.
Right.
Okay, so, um, so on either of the major roads, left turns basically don't happen. I had never thought of you going down to South Street. I use that light all the time. Um, my street bouton ends at, um, State Street. I never go to, uh, turn on that light. I always go to the stoplight on South Street because that's the only safe place to get out. And that actually creates the gaps in traffic in the safe way you can make the turns. So maybe they should add a stoplight at Sutherland, um, and at the next street. What's the next one that Bob lives on?
Washington.
So adding a stoplight at Sutherland by whatever mechanism could be done would be great. So what about the end of Year Street, Lincoln? Joanne, do you have any thoughts as to what could be done to make that easier?
Uh, no. A stoplight, but.
At least visibility, right? So take away the, the, uh, parking spot on.
That, they don't, you know, they want as much parking as possible, but it is hard.
Yeah.
To see. And I'm in a big car. I can't imagine seeing out of your car, Susan.
I know.
So, Justin L, do you have trouble, uh, coming out of Stone Gate?
At times. There's, there's a mirror that was posted on, on the, um, light posts at the end of Stone Gate.
Yes.
Um, and it's, it's so, uh, it's, it's very hard to see out of. I can't say that I've ever really looked at it. Might not even be pointing in the right direction. I haven't had too many problems getting out though. I feel like I can squeak out.
Yeah. And Susan, you have, you have to come out of your driveway right onto South Main Street. That's, that's harrowing.
Yeah, no, it's, you know, timing is everything. There are times of the day when, you know, you don't do it. Turn left and go down Rand and, you know, circle around. Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I've got a hop at 7:30. Are we meeting next week?
Um, yeah, I think it makes sense to meet next week. Would you guys thought?
That's fine with me.
I think I can. I'm not going to be at our house, um, but I, I will try to join in since we'll be down at the lake with a lot of family, but.
Ooh, nice.
Do you want to schedule it for a different day?
No, I, I think that's fine. Let's do it. Now, I think, uh, there's at least an 80% chance I'll be able to make it.
Okay. Yeah, I'm in, uh, I'm in Pittsburgh at the moment.
Pittsburgh. So, Justin, like if, if you can't make the meeting, how do we do it?
Dorothea can assign anybody to be an organizer, so I think whoever is on, she can, she can point to.
Okay.
I should be able to make it though. I'm gonna, gonna try.
Okay. So what's assignment for next week?
Well, I think we can continue discussions on these. Unless we want to, well, if we're gonna end in five minutes, I think that's a good idea. Um, so we can talk about these Bike Boulevards. Um, my initial comments on these Bike Boulevards is they're not connected. They're just segments. It's kind of, it'd be nice if you actually had things connected so you could achieve the goal of getting, being able to bike to school, for example. Um, and then we had the next section. And you tell me what people thought, but uh, the section on the pages 85 to 96, I didn't have a lot of comments on that. A lot of it was just kind of, um, I guess, background information and, uh, a lot of it was rated, was directed towards the town. So, we might be able to breeze through that next section fairly quickly with whatever comments people had. Um, and then my question is if we want to actually get started talking about the LWRP document, since we've already read through here, um, I can recommend that people read through the LWRP document. And if you don't have it, it's on the Village website. I can email you guys the link if you want. But I think it would be, make sense to start taking a look at it. Um, my initial read of it, I'll just give you some suggestions for where you can start. Um, so in the document, it talks about the LWRP policies. I believe there's 12 of them. Um, policy one and policy nine are quite related to this document. And it also, in the LWRP document, it has, um, sections of the village and recommendations for what to do with that. And, uh, so for example, I'm just gonna give some of the sections that you can take a look at, but pretty much any of the youth-specific stuff in the village is good reading. But there's areas around the North Main Street Bridge, um, which is areas around 75 Monroe and the town side, there, um, there, whatever their sewer plant is over there. There's comments about that. Um, there's, it talks about either end of Shane Place. And it talks about that North Main Street section. And I think there's some specific comments about crosswalks and things like that. So if there's specific recommendations for crosswalks in there that disagree with this plan, I'm not sure what to do about that. But that, I think it was worth, um, discussing that. Uh, it talks about the Shane Place area and Bob Ford Field. And, which is where the, the baseball Little League fields are. And, uh, it also talks about the Monroe Avenue Bridge area. Um, trying to think, I guess that's the one over there by, um, 75 Monroe and the other thing. So all those specific things, I'd suggest if you do a little bit of reading on some of that. Uh, so, again, LWRP policy one and nine and the specific sections of the village. So that was my thought if, when we're ready to talk about LWRP. We could also talk more about this document, but I think the suggestions from Susan is maybe some of the background stuff doesn't, we don't need to weigh in very much on that. Um, so when I read through this document, I think the only other section I had a number that had some comments and stuff in is pages in the 30s. So basically, I'm, I'm digging pages. For excluding the town stuff. But, I mean, in general, some of the stuff in, in the range of pages, um, 30 through 40 is where I had a few thoughts and notes, but a lot of that is town. So, um, maybe at some point. Go ahead.
Do we have time to get a meeting, a workshop, uh, properly posted for next week?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's already on the Village, uh, website to have a regular Monday meeting. No?
No, there's just an HPP. They'd have to post this.
Oh, HPP is next Monday?
Yeah.
Six o'clock.
Uh, maybe that's a bad idea to have an overlapping meeting.
What's on their agenda? Oh, a bunch of signs, fences, doors, stairs. It's got a lot to talk about.
So you say, okay, if they're talking about signs, fences and doors, maybe it's not controversial enough for us to withhold a meeting. And the off-chance that it's. And the off-chance that it's a raging controversy.
Renee has got a dock and stairs on the, does she have a dock? So if Renee did want to join, she may not be able to. That's, uh, I, I don't know if she was planning on it though. And Brooke Fossey is also on there, but
Oh, do we wanna have it next Monday at 6 or another time?
How about, how about earlier? Justin Fleetster, can you do earlier?
I'm back in town next week. Uh, I could do earlier.
How about 4:30?
I think I can do that.
Yeah, that would be a little bit easier here, too, actually.
Good.
Since I'm, since I'm already working, um, 7 days this week, I'm not expected to work too hard on Monday.
Yeah, given the fact that both Brooke and Renee are, uh, in the HPP meeting, I think it'd be nice to leave it open for you both.
Right. Um, I've gotta hop. It was good seeing everybody. So, unless I hear differently, um, next Monday at 4:30?
Okay.
Sounds great.
Sounds like a plan.
Okey-dokey. Have a good week, everyone.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Hi. Thanks a lot, everyone.
Have a good week.
Thanks a lot, everyone. Have a